Thank you, Eric. We're here today to move, go over the results of the audit for the Lafayette Parish School Board for the year ending June 30th of 2017. And we had an exit conference last week with some of the management officials as well as Mr. Hidalgo and Mr. Guidry. And we were here today to go over this with the board. Let me just start by saying this is a, it's a good report. We have a good surplus for the year and the findings we're going to go over. Many of, there's five findings that we wanted to mention. And four of those have really been taken care of as we speak. And so that being said, let's get started with that. And we'll look at page 24, pages 24 and 25 in the small blue book that was handed out. What we did as we normally do is we take out some excerpts from the 177-page CAFER. And we put these into a smaller version of that of the more important items that we want to cover with the board. And so let's start with 24 and 25. And as you can see, we have, we have five findings that we're mentioning for 2017. And there's four of these that are internal control findings. And as you can see, number three, 2017-3, it also references number five. So it's kind of all of the same. But getting started with the first item, it says policies, and this has been in effect, we've been having this finding or a similar version of it since 2006. And it says policies and procedures regarding collection of monies for various fundraisers and activities in school activity funds at the individual schools are not being enforced by the principals. The school board should closely monitor these activities in order to ascertain that the policies and procedures are being adhered to and make, take action regarding those not being followed properly. As you can see, the corrective action plan as indicated from the administration, it specifies various items here. Some of the things we discussed in the exit last week were possibly looking at the expenditures and where the majority of those expenditures are. For example, there's $10 million that's being spent in school activity funding. And that's in, on page 118 of the big CAFER report. We list all of the schools. And there's right at $10 million that's being brought in and also expended at the various schools. With the six high schools, and really, Southside had very little activity in this, but, so basically, you only had five. But let's say with six high schools, you're talking about 50% of the expenditures being by the different, the six high schools. So we can get 50% coverage by just focusing on those six schools. And some of the discussion we had last week was to possibly look at maybe getting an individual, an accounting-type personnel who could do some monitoring, and that person would cover two of the schools. So we're talking about three people for six high schools. And there was also some discussion about possibly charging maybe a fee for the fundraisers, which would help compensate and pay for these particular individuals or personnel who would be doing this particular thing. So that's some of the things that we were discussing. And I know Mr. Guidry and his staff have additional comments and ideas about maybe trying to alleviate this particular finding. Billy, I don't know if you want to add anything at this point?
No, that was pretty much it. We had taken a look at maybe focusing in on, at the high school level and maybe consider sharing of an additional bookkeeper, say, between two high schools to where we could at least focus on about 35% of those receipts, 35 to 40%, you know, get a big portion of it, some assistance just because of the volume.
Right.
And the volume, of course, being, a great deal of it being at the high school level of the activities. So that, that was sort of where we had left that discussion after looking at, you know, several different options.
Right.
Mr. Guidry, so I feel like we've talked about this before. I thought we had authorized an additional person to address this at some point, maybe not. You can correct me if I'm wrong on that. But considering that this has been an issue on and off for 11 now going into, I guess, assuming if we don't do anything, it'll be 12 years, you know, what else, what else can be done? I mean, have we looked at best practices for other school systems? You know, over the last year or so, I think I've seen some demonstrations on software programs, or I say software programs, but more like online services that take a fee. I think when we met with the Horford Farm, they demonstrated a online service that took a fee but assisted with the, all the regulatory action that's needed to keep a nonprofit, like, for the records for a nonprofit, I assume it's probably similar to what we would have to do. But have we looked into any sort of technology solutions that would make it easier for the principals to be more compliant? I mean, I know that anecdotally, I went to a PTA event at Woodvale, and they, I think they had to have four copies of the same form filled out in order to raise money to be compliant. So I think maybe there's a big administrative burden that technology might help solve.
Yeah, some of the things we've looked at in terms of fundraisers, of course, first of all is just the sheer volume. There's a large number of fundraisers that are being held in our school district as compared to other school districts. In terms of technology, we have contacted other school systems just to see what they're doing, what they might be doing that we could take a look at. And we haven't seen anything in terms of, that would limit the amount of footwork that would be done, mainly because the software packages that we have seen would, could not be accommodated by our current student information systems. There'd have to be some pretty major changes made there. And that was the big hiccup, so to speak, or obstacle that would prevent us from looking at the particular software package we ran across that one school district was using. The other school districts that we contacted are, you know, one of them's actually using our guidelines. The, we contacted a total of seven. One was actually using ticket software, that's the one I just commented on. One was actually using our guidelines. And the others were pretty much not automated in that arena. One of the things that we've looked at, that the board has actually approved, was online fundraising. You know, where you get, you utilize a company that basically, the fundraisers are listed on their website, their collections, or payments are made there electronically, and then the funds are remitted to the schools. So that is an option that's available to the schools, but it limits the type or the nature of the fundraiser that's being had, if you would. That lent itself more for fundraisers that were like, a purpose fundraiser, which maybe fund a trip or a project or a program, that sort of thing. And we have such a variety of fundraisers that it accommodated a few of them, but not a majority of them. So that's sort of the, that's sort of where we are on the automation piece, online fundraising, but limited. We've also looked at, we're piloting payments by credit cards to try to limit the amount of cash that's being collected. We have that implemented at, I believe, we're definitely at one high school with an addition of seven schools during the current year. So we are looking at credit card payments to try to limit the amount of cash that's being collected and reduce the reconciliation process.
So is the, it says it is not being enforced by principals. Is that, is it specifically an issue with cash, the way that they handle cash? Is that, I guess what I'm trying to understand is what the issue is so that, you know, it says that the board should ascertain that the policies and procedures are being adhered to, but what I'm trying to do is figure out what it is that we can do, right, to help so this doesn't pop up again next year.
The, I think the biggest issue is that the fundraiser reconciliation process isn't being completed properly. And by process, you know, it's a fundraiser reconciliation form that, I'll give you an example. You know, if you have a ticket, if you have 100 tickets that are being sold at $5 apiece, and in the reconciliation process, you would inventory the number of tickets you have left. So let's say you have 10 tickets left. So that, that would mean that you sold 90 tickets at $5. We should see $450 being deposited. So on the reconciliation report, we would expect to see the accounting for the number of tickets. In other words, you'd have the number of tickets that were sold, you'd have the number of tickets that are remaining. You would, it would net to the 90, you multiply it times what it's being sold by, and to come to the total that's being deposited. So it's the completion of that report that's not happening. Now, I've oversimplified, of course, the fundraiser, because there's a lot more moving parts, but it's to give you an idea that what's not being done completely, in most, in more cases than not, is a reconciliation that basically allows us to determine how much money should have been deposited into that fundraiser account. We have set up a separate account for every fundraiser at every school to facilitate that process. So at the end of the day, when that reconciliation process report is completed, we have one account that's tied to what's on that report. Well, the problem is, what's on the report is not complete, for various reasons.
So the fundraising money, is it technically public funds if we collect it?
Yes.
Okay. So the principals have fiduciary and a legal duty to make sure that they're completing the forms and that they properly reconcile all the money that is raised.
They do, but what you have is, the way the fundraiser process works is you have a fundraiser sponsor. And typically, it's a matter of the principal, in a lot of cases, almost having to volunteer someone because it's an additional responsibility, you know, and you have a lot of that happening because you have a lot of fundraisers. So the principal does that, and then, so that club sponsor is the one who we're looking to for preparation of that fundraiser reconciliation report, as well as the entire process. So ultimately, it's the principal's responsibility, yes. But that principal is relying on that club, that fundraiser sponsor to basically take care of the day-to-day paperwork, just because of the sheer number of fundraisers that there are. So it is the principal's responsibility. And the principal's in a position where, you know, there's, it's a challenge to find enough sponsors for all the fundraisers. So, you know, to, it becomes a, it becomes, the challenge becomes enforcing that, you know, all of the requirements from a reporting standpoint and having an adequate number of sponsors that, so the fundraisers can take place. I don't know, Mr. Craig, if you want to add to that?
So, yes, sir. And it's not just the fundraisers, it's all the different athletic organizations. And as we mentioned during the exit audit meeting, most of these people are full-time teachers, and then they're also coaching a sport or sponsoring an organization, and then they're also responsible for the bookkeeping and all the fundraising aspects and fiduciary responsibilities. They run out of time in the day, and really, the priority is to be teaching the kids. I truly don't think any sponsor or principal is trying to not do the forms correctly, they just, they're overburdened with other tasks and they make errors in that process. And unfortunately, I've actually been in situations where, you know, you try to counsel or warn or discipline a sponsor that's not properly doing their paperwork, well, their solution is, I'll step down as being the sponsor. So now, you still have to have that program, or you still have to have that organization, but you don't have anybody to work with the kids or work with the administration of it. And so the principals are trying to balance covering all these organizations and athletics and still trying to support the teachers. And I guess it's, it is, it's human error typically because there's so much fiduciary responsibility and paperwork in addition to their instructional responsibilities.
Mr. President, yes, sir. So I'll say, Mr. President, that I attended this pre-meeting as well. And I want to echo what everybody else said and add to it. You know, I think that there is a lack of accountability here, but I, and I think for many reasons. And I think some of them are valid, you know, Mr. Craig and Mr. Guidry mentioned. You know, these, these sponsors are employees, they're teachers. Their first priority is for them to teach students to get their classwork done. So everything outside of that falls secondary or tertiary or way down the list. But it still doesn't change the fact that there's a lack of, you know, attention and accountability paid to these processes that are put in place. So I have no problem at all charging the fundraiser itself to hire folks that will focus on this solely, because this is a major part of funding source for the district. And I want to stop seeing this kind of be a ding in our report every year. It's time to fix it or do away with it, which I think is the ultimate, you know, last resort. But I'll give you an example. I mean, the concessions at football games, that's a big deal. My understanding is that's a, that's a big deal in the parish. That raises a lot of money. And so you might have five, six, seven, eight people working in that concession stand, so five, six, seven, eight people are touching cash. Well, I think one potential solution would be, instead of cash being accepted behind that counter, everyone go over to a ticket booth, buy a certain lot of tickets, and use tickets to purchase their concessions. Now, that does add another level, however, it's another checkpoint. It's fewer people handling cash, and it helps to reconcile or balance the end of the evening, the end of the season, and the end of the year. That's just one minor example of something that could be put into place. But I am in favor of utilizing a percentage. I think 10% was thrown out. I would be in support of that, of charging the fundraiser itself, because after all, these fundraisers are to do many different things on our campuses, but, you know, if it keeps dinging us this way, something has to be done about it. So, you know, I'm sure there are going to be a thousand other solutions that come to the table, but those are just a couple of things. I mean, you know, getting people the right training. I mean, can, can we start there? You know? And it's not, it's not the fault of the staff here, because they've produced all of the material for these folks. But I think that teaching is the number-one priority. So this unfortunately falls second, third, fourth on their list of priorities. So I think we need, we need specific people to handle this, and I would be wide open to charging the fundraiser for it. And I don't know if you've mentioned any of the numbers yet, but we're talking about some big numbers at some of these high schools. So, you know, this, this could be done. This could be done.
Like Lafayette High is a million and a half, Como's 1.2 million, you know? So you've got some significant numbers in here. Acadia High School, 1.1 million. So right there, just three of them.
And make no mistake, I'm not trying to punish the folks for fundraising, but what I am saying is, you are responsible for fundraising, and if you cannot properly, for whatever reason, whether it's excusable or not, you can't properly account for this, then, hey, it's going to have to come out of your efforts, because we've got to, we've got to quit getting these kind of reports.
Right, I just, I'm going to finish. I know you have more to talk about, but my concern is, when you're talking about $10 million, it can potentially entice people if we're not diligent in our enforcement. And people know we're not diligent in our enforcement. There's the potential that when there's that much money involved, I mean, 1% of 10 million's 100,000. I had to do my calculator just to make sure I was right. But if, if it's possible that we're not accounting for 1%, just 1% of that $10 million, that's $100,000 that may be going by the wayside, maybe going into people's pockets. I'm not saying it is, but the potential is there. My concern is that it wouldn't be the first time that someone was caught with their hands in the cookie jar. If something like that were to happen at LPSS, it could end the fundraising opportunities for everyone. So I feel like we have an obligation to do a better job at, and even if it is at the expense of the fundraisers to take a percentage, 5% takes a half million dollars that you can then use for enforcement. I think that that might be necessary. I think it's necessary that we do more.
With regards to the $10 million, not, not all of those funds are generated through fundraisers, so I just wanted to clarify that. Of the 10 million, I'm going to say on the high end, I'm thinking it'd probably be in the neighborhood of 3 million that would be tied to fundraisers. So it's still a significant number. So that doesn't, it brings us to the same point, but I just wanted to clarify that. So here's the process that we've been through over the past several years. We've created rating forms, seven different areas, receipts, disbursements, voiding checks, timeliness of deposits, fundraisers, classroom fees, courtesy funds. And over the years, we basically have narrowed it down. Initially, we had issues almost in all seven areas. We narrowed it down to two areas, classroom fees and fundraisers. So there's been, a lot of that's been attributed to that rating form. That has been a process whereby we share the form with the principals and say, this is a test, this is what you're going to be tested on. We've taken that, our internal auditors, there are two, have an opportunity to audit about 22 schools a year, in addition to everything else we ask them to do. That's half. We've asked our external auditors to cover the other half. So we've gone from auditing schools like once every three years to auditing every school every year. So we've increased it in that regard. It's been a collaborative effort. We've also asked the external auditors to use our rating form. So we've gotten together and meshed their workflows with ours, changed the rating forms a little bit, not considerably, to where we're all, we're using the same rating form, so that a principal is now getting a rating form every year, as opposed to every other year or every, every three years. So that part's improved. We've taken a look at automating. So we've asked, we've put in payment by credit card to reduce the amount of cash being collected. We have allowed online fundraising. Again, that assists with a limited number of fundraisers, but nonetheless, we have produced training videos, basically taking them from the request for approval for the fundraiser, all the way to the preparation of the fundraiser reconciliation form. So they can take a look at that. We identify the commonly made mistakes and how to address them. But again, they have to have the time to, you know, to watch those videos. So we're at the point now where we're looking at it and we're saying, well, how can we fix this with a minimal amount of use of resources, financial resources? And that's sort of where we came up with, well, the issue is, we have a large volume of fundraisers. It can only be automated to a certain point, and at that point, you're going to have, you still have to have inventories being taken, but, you know, that's not happening in more cases than not, and you still have to prepare the fundraiser reconciliation form. So that's how we, that's how we arrived at, well, if we focus on the high schools only, let's start, let's break this down into smaller pieces. Instead of all 44 sites, where can, where can we get the most impact with the, you know, minimal amount of fiscal output? And that was the high schools. And that's where we came up with, well, if we added a bookkeeper and their responsibility was just to assist the club sponsors with preparing, with preparing the reconciliation, not preparing them as much as reviewing them and having the sponsor correct them, so the sponsor would learn how to do it properly, and would have, you know, in addition to the videos, they would have someone to assist them in that process. So that's sort of how we, how we got to the point of suggesting the three additional bookkeepers. It was after a lot of review, checking with other school districts to see what they were doing. We did also, to, you had asked a question earlier, and I wanted to, I guess, clarify because I didn't do a very good job of providing you with the complete response. We did look at 501(c)(3) organizations, taking care of the fundraiser and then remitting the funds to our, to our schools, to remove that burden from the club sponsors. And basically, after discussing it with General Counsel, what that boiled down to was, well, because there's a, because there's still a perception of the schools being affiliated with that fundraising, it would require a lot of the same record-keeping to take place. But ultimately, to limit all of that, we felt comfortable that a good middle ground would be limiting those organizations to one fundraiser, one major fundraiser, to where you didn't have basically the same activity happening but outside of, off of the school's books by volunteers. Because ultimately, that's what, that's how it's viewed, or that's what it becomes. Even though you have a 501(c)(3) outside of the school handling it, it's no different than having a volunteer handling it. You still have to have that accountability and record-keeping so that we can tell that we're still, we're getting the correct amount of funds. So we did take a look at that as well. So those are all the things that we, that we looked at in arriving at the recommendation or consideration that we just take a look at the high schools and the additional, two schools for an additional bookkeeper to see if that would address it.
Okay. Again, I think we had good dialogue on this, and Billy and his staff do have some good ideas on trying to resolve this. We've tried different things. As he's indicated, we're trying to audit based on the way that you're rating your schools for one half of them, and your internal staff, internal audit staff is doing the other half. But maybe we need to move and tweak that even a little bit further and try and resolve this issue. But obviously, I think you guys are dedicated to trying and getting this off so that this recommendation does not find itself in your report in the future. Okay, on the second item that we have, it says policies regarding purchasing cards are not being followed. The school board should implement procedures designed to ascertain that these policies are being enforced. This has already been corrected as we speak. So I don't think we need to discuss this any further. This one has been resolved. The third item says, C note 2017-005, which is right below in the compliance issue. And all of the last three, basically, number three, four, and five, all pertain to the early childhood program that we had, and there were some enrollment problems, enrollment reporting problems, and eligibility problems. What happened is, this was uncovered last year when we were doing the audit for 2016. Well, as you know, we do the audit subsequent to year-end. So by the time we caught this and it was corrected, you were into the second fiscal year. So that's why it's and it was corrected, you were into the second fiscal year, so that's why it's mentioned again. I suspect we will not see this in next year's audit. So basically, if we can resolve that first issue, we don't incur any other issues, we may have no findings in the future audits, and that's what we're hoping for. Any further questions or discussions on the audit findings? Okay, the second thing I'd like to look at is gonna be the general fund statement of revenues, that's gonna be on page three of the handout that we gave you, page three. And again, this is the general fund revenues, and in order to expedite it, I'm gonna go ahead and just hit some of the high spots of this. You can see we have it broken out, which is required by parish sources, state sources, and federal sources. On the parish sources, we have ad valorem taxes. And as you can see, you have your budget in the first column, which you've seen before, and then the actual numbers for 2017, with the third column being the variance, and then in '16, you have the prior year numbers. Property taxes or ad valorem taxes going into the general fund increased by $5.3 million from sixty-nine million to seventy-four point five million. Reason for this, of course, is a reassessment year at the end of '16, and of course, those taxes were collected in fiscal '17. Sales taxes, on the other hand, were not as good, went from seventy-three million in sales taxes last year that went into the general fund, to seventy million this year. Remember, this is one and a half percent of the 2% sales taxes that are collected by this system. I think this involves the 65 sales tax, which is 1%, and the 87 sales tax, which goes into this fund, and has various criteria in which it has to be spent, but it does go into the general fund. The half cent sales tax from the eighty-two sales, 2002 tax, that goes into a separate fund, it is not identified here. Interest in, on interest-bearing deposits, next category, went from six hundred thousand to seven hundred and seventy-three thousand. Next category is the rentals, leases, and royalties, went down from three hundred and forty thousand to two hundred and eighty-nine thousand. The tuition for summer school and driver's ed, pretty much the same, four hundred and seventy-eight thousand versus four hundred and eighty-four thousand for the current year. And miscellaneous, here you have a significant jump, went from a hundred and eighty-one million last, a hundred and eighty-one thousand last year, to three million, three hundred and thirty-three thousand for the current year. Reason for the increase of 3.1 million is the West Side Elementary. We received some insurance proceeds which went into this category, so that is the reason for that. As you can see, the budgeted number for parish source revenues in the general fund was a hundred and forty-nine million, came in at a hundred and forty-nine million, six hundred thousand, about three hundred thousand more than we thought, and last year, that number was a hundred and forty-three million, eight hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Now from state sources, from the State Public School Fund, which is equalization, that number went up from a hundred and eleven million, eight seventy-three, to a hundred and fifteen million, eight eighty-one, up about four million dollars. Of that four million, probably 1.4 billion was an increase in the pupil count by about three hundred and some odd, and the balance was, again, this formulation, as everyone is aware, is done based on previous year numbers, and so we got a little bit more monies from that, we suspect that maybe we'll get a little bit less going forward in the future, but last year, we did get about two and a half million dollars, which was from the prior year formula that was utilized, prior year's numbers from the formula that was utilized. Under state revenue sharing, that number's pretty much the same, 2.1 million both years. PIPs program, seventy-four thousand versus a hundred thousand. Non-public textbooks, pretty much the same, two hundred and eight, two hundred and eight thousand last year, two hundred and six thousand for the current year. The other category went down dramatically, from one million, two seventy, last year, to six hundred and twenty-three thousand. If everyone remembers, in 2016, we got some supplemental monies from the state in this category, so consequently, we didn't get that this year, just got the normal six hundred thousand dollars. Now under federal sources, under federal grants, we had forty-eight thousand in the prior year, it's seven hundred and ninety-five thousand going into it for the current year. Again, this stems from the West Side Elementary, from the FEMA proceeds that we received there. So approximately three-quarters of a million dollars was received in FEMA this year. Total revenues for the general fund were budgeted to receive two hundred and sixty-nine million, two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. Did slightly better than that, at two hundred and sixty-nine million, three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. And you can see, last year was two hundred and fifty-nine million, three seventy-six. So our revenues in the general fund are up ten million dollars from the previous year. Various categories, also some insurance proceeds from the West Side flooding problem, but anyway, it is up ten million. You had anticipated it, you're right on target with the budget. Now let's look at pages four through eleven, and this will be the expenditures, how were the money spent in the general fund, and again, the categories that are indicated are instruction and breaking it down between the regular programs, the special ed programs, and so on. I'm gonna look at the subtotals on each category, and like total regular programs, last year, we spent a hundred and one million, seven sixty, this year, the spending was a hundred and two million, nine sixty. Again, an increase of approximately 1.2 million dollars. That, if you look at the textbook category, that item went up from 2.4 million to 5.9 million. And I think this was the adoption of the new ELA textbook program, and that was incurred this past year. Also, the next line item, it says equipment. Again, this was the West Side temporary buildings and equipment, as you can see, that number went up from three hundred and thirty thousand last year, to 1.9 million for the current year. So some of these increases, when revenues came from the West Side situation, but also you're gonna see some expenditures that were incurred because of that. So total regular programs, as I said, a hundred and one million, seven sixty last year, a hundred and two million, nine sixty for the current year. Special ed programs, very comparable, totals last year, 29.2 million, totals this year, 29.9 million. You might wanna scan those categories, it's mainly in the employee benefits area that we had some increases here. Flipping the page to page five, on the vocational ed programs, very comparable here, three million, eight seventeen on this total last year, three million, eight twenty-seven for the totals for this year, so up about ten thousand dollars over the prior year. Under other instructional programs, here we went down, went from seven million, three hundred and seventy-one thousand last year, to six million, forty-three thousand for the current year, we're down 1.3 million, mainly in the teachers and the aides category, so mainly in the instructional area, in this particular category, it did go down. The next item is the special programs, and here, we spent eight and a half billion last year, this one went up to 10.1 million. Again, basically, in the certain special program areas for the teachers and instructional type personnel or support personnel, those are the items for the increase of 1.6 million dollars. Adult and continuing ed program, that's very minimal, five thousand last year, thirty-two thousand the current year. Under support, pupil support services, which includes your supervisors, your therapists, your counselors, so on and so forth. Last year, we spent twenty million, four hundred and three thousand, very comparable this year, twenty million, one hundred and ten thousand dollars, down about three hundred thousand dollars over the prior year. Next page, on page seven, we have instructional staff support services, spent 9.6 million last year, spent 9.6 million for the current year. On the general administration, and here's where you have the board members, the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and the clerical and secretarial staff, legal services, audit services, and so on. It starts on page seven, you may wanna scan these, you can see judgments are included in here as well, and it concludes on the next page, but even when you add everything together, the totals here went down from five million, five hundred thousand, down to 5.4 million, down about 200,000 dollars. School administration, here you have your principals, your assistant principals, and so on, and clerical support staff for those services. You spent 16.6 million last year, we spent 17.3 million for the current year. Again, mainly in the salaries category, if you add all of those items up, I think that's up about 300,000, and of course, the benefits are up as well, but it went from 16.6 to 17.3 million, up about 600,000 dollars. On the business services, you have the business official, the accountant auditor, and purchasing agent, and so on. It begins on page eight, concludes on page nine, and the totals here, very comparable, went down about 50,000 dollars, two million, eight seventy-nine versus two million, eight twenty-four. Next category is the operations and maintenance of plant services. Here we did have an increase of about a million dollars, which is not bad, considering the magnitude of this area, was 20 million, five ninety-three last year, we spent 21 million, five sixty-four for the current year. And one item is the equipment, you might wanna look at, it was 50,000 last year, and you had various projects that were incurred this year, you had budgeted for it, you spent 600,000 dollars, so we went up from 50,000 to 600,000 on this particular line item. On the transportation, student transportation services, beginning on nine, ending on 10, here we went up from sixteen, we went down really from 16 million, eight hundred and seventy-three thousand, down to 16 million, one hundred and fifty-one thousand, down about 700,000 dollars.
A question on that. This wouldn't reflect the route changes from, or would it reflect the route changes for the, and I guess I'm asking this, this would not, so this would not, would this reflect the potential efficiencies from the routing, I think it was routing software, Mr. Santani may recall?
I think what you'd be waiting for is this, next year at this time, when you look at 2018 actual versus 2017 actual, that would be the number that you're talking about.
Thank you.
Okay, central services is the next category, went from 4.3 million, up to 4 million, six seventy-one. Again, not a significant increase here. Non-instructional services, here, this is a minimal category, we really didn't have any expenditures this year, it was 35,000 last year. Community service, again, about 81,000 versus 95,000 this year. Facilities acquisition and construction, minimal here, in this, in this fund, 2.3 million versus, I mean, 2,300,000, 367 dollars versus 13,196. Now, on the group insurance, remember, you have a separate group health fund, but because of the accounting treatment and the presentation, it is shown within your general fund, where you show all the expenses, and then you can see that category, it says premiums allocated to departments, so it was all reallocated back, so it has no effect on the general fund per se, but it is presented here for various accounting reasons, which we've talked about in previous years. But the total spent in the group health fund last year was about 50 million, 796,000, and this year, it's 50 million, 272,000. So you're doing a good job with this, we will look at that specific fund in just a moment. Total expenditures for the Lafayette Parish school system, budgeted to spend 249 million, 796,000 dollars, actually spent 800,000, more than that, at 250 million, 685,000, versus last year, where you spent 247 million. So we're up three million dollars over the previous year. And what I'd like to do now is to go back to page two, and we will look at the summary of the general fund operations. We kinda looked at the details, I made certain analogies, and we had various questions regarding it, but here on this one page, we will look now at basically the total revenues versus the total expenditures, and what was our surplus, and what did we do with the extras that we had. Looking at revenues, as I pointed out, looking at that third column, the actual numbers, we received 269 million dollars in revenues versus 259 million last year. Expenditures went from 247 million versus 250 million for the current year. But look at your excess of revenues over expenditures at this line item, and this is before transfers out, we were at 11 million, 619,000 last year, and we're at 18 million, 665,000 for the current year. We're up 7 million dollars at this line item, so our surplus went up at this line item by 7 million. 10 million dollar increase in revenues, 3 million dollar increase in expenditures, the net is about 7. You can see other financing sources and uses, and again, you're transferring some of these monies, you can see that transfers out was 20.8 million dollars that was transferred out of the general fund, and was transferred, over 14 million of dollars of this went into the construction fund, I think it went into two construction funds, and which you're gonna use for various construction projects in future years. And you were left in the general fund with a surplus last year of 2,000, 2 million, 696, 000, and this year, we're at 2 million, 574,000 dollars. So pretty much the same, and I think that was a decision made by the staff, I think it was a good decision, we need more monies into our construction funds, that was done, they're set aside, they're ready to be used. We still have a healthy fund balance, we were at 88.9 million dollars in the general fund at the end of last year, adding that two and a half million again this year, our total fund balance is 91.4 million dollars, or 91.5 million dollars in the general fund. Now, of that 91 million, and we may wanna look at this in just a moment, of that, 8.2 million dollars of that is pertaining to the group health fund. Remember, I said it was included in here because of accounting and reporting purposes, but we can look at that one right now, and that's gonna be on page, page 18. Page 18 is gonna give you the group health fund and how it operated. It's the same 52 million dollars of charges for services that you're seeing, and the 50 million dollars that was allocated from the operating expenses, and you were left with an operating income of 2.4 million dollars in this particular fund, and in adding to that, the interest earned on the interest-bearing deposits of another 65,000, you ended up in this fund with a surplus of two and a half million. Compounded with the net position or net surplus we had at the end of last year, we're at 8.2 million dollars. And this 8.2 million is included in the 98 some odd million that I just mentioned, I wanna make that perfectly clear, okay?
The surplus is also from here?
Yes.
Or 2.5?
That's correct, the bulk of it is from here. You basically transferred whatever surplus you had that was not pertaining to the group health fund, is, was transferred to the capital projects funds, so. Okay, any questions on that? Okay, hearing none. At this point, why don't we look at the general fund expenditures by type? This is on page 13, we looked at this 250, 50 million dollars, and let's see how it breaks out when you just categorize it between salaries and other expenses. Page 13, and you've seen this before, we have four years of history here that we're showing. Personnel expenditures in 2017, of the 250 million, 205 million dollars is for personnel and employee benefits. It's 82% of the general fund's budget, last year was 84% of the general fund's budget. The other expenditures are all broken out, you can see instructional materials and supplies, that item went up from 6.6 million in '16 to 10.6 million. Well, we just talked about that, you went to this new program, and consequently, we incurred those textbooks expenditures this past year. But it's been running around the 6 million dollars, 6 and a half million dollar range, except this year, because of the change, what we did, it increased it. Repairs and maintenance are pretty consistent, as you can see, for both years, at about 5.8 million. Utilities and telephone, 5.5 versus 5.7 million. Insurance is right at 2 million dollars a year. Contracted services, about 3.8 million last year, 3.4 million this year. Appropriation to charter schools, 9.4 million dollars in 2016, this year, 10.8 million dollars. And look, if you look back to '14, we had 433,000 dollars that was going. This year, we have 10.8 million that's going to charter schools. Other appropriations or other expenditures, I should say, it's 6.3 million last year, and it's 6.9 million this year, but total other expenditures, aside from salaries and benefits, we're spending about 18 cents on every dollar of the general fund on other support type expenditures other than personnel. We're spending 82 cents on every dollar in the general fund on salaries and employee benefits. And it's pretty consistent each year. Any questions on this particular page? Yes, sir?
I just wanted to mention that with regards to charter schools, that dollar amount is, represents the local share, that's transferred to the charter school. The state share is reported as a reduction to, in the revenue section, so I just wanted to point that out. I think the number comes out to about 19 million, if you look at it in total.
That's what I was about to say, it's approximately double that 10 million of the total amount that's going to the schools. Okay, and one thing to realize with the charter schools is, this system and all districts basically have the infrastructure with the facilities and so on, that you could accommodate these students, yet it wouldn't cost that much, it wouldn't cost 20 million. these students, yet it wouldn't cost that much, it wouldn't cost twenty million dollars probably to do so. But instead, you know, 'cause we already have the fixed cost already, is what I'm saying. A lot of these fixed costs are here. So it would add to our surplus if we were educating those kids, in my opinion. Okay, next thing we could look at is gonna be the four-year comparison for the Lafayette Parish school system per pupil. That's on page twelve. So if you go back one page, and I'm gonna, just, you might wanna just scan this one, I'm gonna look at it more on a per pupil basis, as to how much we're receiving from parish sources, and how much we're receiving from the state sources, and what's the total amount, and then how are we spending the monies per pupil? So if you look at the total parish sources this year, we brought in from parish sources, four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars per pupil from parish. Last year was four-thousand-seven-sixty-eight, the year before that was four-thousand-seven-seventy-four. As far as state sources, that number was three-thousand-eight-ninety-four per pupil. It was three-thousand-eight-twenty-eight last year, and it was three-thousand-seven-fifty-eight. So the state has been pretty much the same, it has not changed a whole lot, especially the last two years. Total amount of revenues coming into the general fund for this district, eight-thousand-five-ninety-eight per pupil last year, eight-thousand-eight-sixteen for the current year, for two thousand and seventeen. Now, how much are we spending on direct instruction? If you look at this, you can see way back in fifteen, three years ago, we were spending five-thousand dollars per pupil. Last year we spent five, four-thousand-nine-ninety-seven, and two thousand and seventeen, the current year, we're spending five-thousand-eight dollars. So pretty consistent in every year. The direct student-related services, here we're spending roughly two-thousand-eight-hundred dollars per pupil. That's what it was, two-thousand-eight-eight-eight in two thousand and fifteen. It dropped a little bit to two-thousand-seven-eight-nine last year, and we're at two-thousand-seven-seventy-three for the current year. Total student expenditures for this district, in the general fund, we spent seven-thousand-nine-forty-one in fifteen, seven-thousand-seven-eight-six in sixteen, and seven-thousand-seven-eight-one in seventeen. And you can see the percentage of the total that we're spending on student and student-related expenditures, basically ninety-five cents on every dollar. It's ninety-four-point-eight-three last year, in seventeen, ninety-four-point-eight-one percent in two thousand and sixteen, and it was ninety-five cents in two thousand and fifteen. Now, the, the general administration, business services, and so on, or other support services, we're spending four-hundred dollars per pupil here, and last year was four-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars, and the year before that was four-hundred-and-nine dollars. And again, you can see the excess before transfers, we were at eighteen million this year, basically six-hundred dollars per pupil. Last year we were at three-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars per pupil. Year before that was a hundred-and-eighty-four dollars per pupil, and the year before that was three-hundred-and-forty dollars per pupil. But again, it is positive for every year we've had surpluses, in each one of these years. Any questions on this particular document? Okay, hearing none. Why don't we jump on over to the calculations or the comparisons with the other two school districts that we've normally done, which is on fourteen and fifteen? And let's just hit some of the high spots on this one, but, and maybe just focus on seventeen, but you can see, we have Calcasieu comparisons and St. Tammany comparisons. And parish sources, we're bringing in fifty-seven-hundred dollars per pupil. Calcasieu, remember, they added a sales tax, I think it was somewhere in beginning of sixth, of their fiscal sixteen year, they're up to six-thousand-three-eighty-seven per pupil. St. Tammany is right, is below Lafayette at five-thousand-one-sixty-one. The big key is the state sources, and we've looked at this in the past. St. Tammany's at five-thousand-five-sixty-four per pupil from state sources. Calcasieu's at forty-six-hundred, Lafayette Parish is at thirty-eight-ninety-four. So we're significantly below the other two parishes. And total revenues that we're bringing in from the general fund, you can see nine-thousand-six-fifty-six. Calcasieu's at eleven-thousand-fifty-two dollars, and St. Tammany is at ten-thousand-seven-thirty-eight. Any questions here? Looking at the expenditures on the next page, on student expenditures, you can see direct instruction, we're spending fifty-eight-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars. Calcasieu's at sixty-five-twenty-two, and St. Tammany's at sixty-four-seventeen. On the support services for, for student support, student-related services, we're spending twenty-seven-seventy-three per pupil. Calcasieu's at thirty-four-seventy-nine, and St. Tammany is at thirty-three-sixty-seven. So we're spending a total of eighty-six, one-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars per pupil for student and student expenditures. Calcasieu's at ten-thousand-one dollar, and St. Tammany is at ninety-seven-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars. So we're spending less, but we have less to spend. They have, and, and you, if you look at Calcasieu numbers from the past, since they've gotten that tax, of course, they've been able to increase their spending on instruction and so on and so forth. And you can look at, and these are rough averages, but down at the bottom, the pupil-teacher ratios, I mean, again, these are very rough, but Calcasieu, Calcasieu's at thirteen-point-one-nine, and St. Tammany's at, at fourteen-point-five-three. Lafayette Parish is at sixteen-point, point-one-five, or point-three-five. And you can see our numbers as it compares to the previous year as well. They're pretty much the same, are very, very similar. Any questions here? All right. Perhaps the last thing we could look at is the, is page one, which is gonna be a general fund, and it's gonna be a comparison of the snapshot of the general fund, the comparative balance sheet, and this is general fund only. Doesn't include any federal monies or anything of this nature. But our total assets, you can see, went up from sixteen, it was one-hundred-and-fifty-three-point-nine million, and our total this year is one-hundred-and-seventy million. If you look up above, you can see cash. Our cash went up by about twelve million dollars, from one-hundred-and-seventeen million to one-hundred-and-thirty million. Investments pretty much the same, at sixteen-and-a-half million both years. One item you might wanna look at is due from other funds. Went up from sixteen-point-eight million to nineteen-point-two million. You might say, why? Well, part of it is, the general fund is fronting some of the monies that, I think we've just gotten some bond proceeds, so we're doing some construction-type expenditures. General fund is putting that money out, it's gonna be for another fund. When we get the funding for the, for the bonds, it'll replenish or repay the, the general I think that's the bigger items here. Now, looking at the liabilities, the accounts payable, and again, I think some of these items, two-point-two million last year, went up to three-and-a-half million this year, probably pertains to some of this as well, from the spending for the capital projects that is being fronted by the general fund. Crew salaries and employee benefits, pretty much the same. That's the amount of salaries and benefits we owed as of June thirtieth. Basically, you have two additional months because it's, some people are paid on a twelve-month basis, but they work nine months, so we owe them at the end of June, we owe them for July and August. The, and that was thirty-one million last year, and it's thirty million this year. Claims payable went down from five-point-eight million to three-point-eight million. Due to other funds. Here we had twenty-six million dollars last year that was owed to other funds, and this year it's forty-one million. Well, remember when we looked at the transfers, and I mentioned that, I think there was a fourteen-million-dollar, fifteen-million-dollar transfer that was done right at the end of the year, when Billy and him got the final numbers, they said, well, we wanna put some of this, and I'm sure there was discussions with some of the board, and went ahead and basically appropriated, appropriated that money over to the construction funds. So it was recorded as a liability on the general fund 'cause it owed the other funds. So that's the reason for the increase of about fifteen million dollars, from twenty-six million to forty-two million. Everybody clear on that? Okay, the total liabilities for the general fund went up from sixty-four-point-nine million up to seventy-eight-point-nine million. Again, up that fourteen million dollars, mainly because of what I just told you, is that at the end of the year, they decided to transfer some over to the capital projects fund when the books were closed, and it was made as an entry, the monies were transferred subsequent to year end. Okay, then the fund balances, you have non-spendable, committed, assigned, and unassigned. And you can see your unassigned is pretty much holding at nine-point-five million, and last year down to about nine-point-two million for the current year. The committed went up from seventy-one-point-eight million to seventy-seven million. And let's look at that right now and see how that was, that breaks out. The calculation of the stabilization is on page twenty-two, and I wanna point that out, and then we'll go back to page twenty-one. If you remember, you have a policy, and it was a ninety-day policy, I think it's been amended to maybe a seventy-five-day policy subsequent to June the thirtieth. But the ninety-day policy was at twenty, so you take it basically twenty-five percent of your general fund budgeted expenditures. Those budgeted expenditures were two-hundred-and-seventy-five million, so the stabilization was at twenty-five percent, and it's sixty-eight million, eight-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand dollars. That is the cushion that this board and previous boards have gone ahead and set aside, said we wanna keep at least ninety days of cushion. Now, I think subsequent, it might've been in the month of November or December, Billy, I, I believe, is when it was modified to go to seventy-five days. So next year you'll see it at seventy-five days rather than ninety days. Three months is gonna go down to two-and-a-half months. If you go back one page to page twenty-one, we'll look at this and see how that fund balance is, is, is broken out between the spendable, non-spendable, I'm sorry, which is inventory and prepaid. Those monies have already been spoken for and have been expended for those particular purposes. So they're no longer available for spending, so they're called non-spendable allocations of your fund balance. Committed, the biggest item, of course, is what I just said, is the stabilization. It's sixty-eight-point-eight million. This year it was sixty-five-point-five billion last year. Self-insurance fund, we talked about the surplus in that self-insurance fund, we're up to eight-point-two million dollars in the self-insurance fund. Last year was five-point-seven million. So our total committed is about seventy-two million last year, it's seventy-seven-point-six million dollars of committed fund balance for the current year. The assigned items, self-insurance loss contingency of a million dollars each year, the LD consortium, and that's about one-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand, and the subsequent year's expenditures for the committed items was four-point-nine million last year, it's one-point-nine million for the current year. And the unassigned fund balance of your general fund is nine-point-five million last year, and it's nine-point-two million dollars for the current year. And hence, the same ninety-one million that we talked about earlier, when we did the statement of operations, we just talked about it when we did the balance sheet, and it's the same ninety-one-point-four million dollars. But you have the details of what makes it up.
Mr. Santani?
Okay, any questions? Yes, sir?
I'm glad you asked. Can you go back to page one?
Sure.
And explain the increase from two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand dollars to one-point-seven million dollars on the line item of due from other governmental agencies?
We're calling it, this one right here, two-point-six.
That was the, that was the spend, that we were doing in front of the money for the projects.
Oh, for some of the governmental projects? Okay. But Mandy says it is, is we had some governmental projects that we were doing, and, and we're gonna get reimbursed from another governmental agency, possibly the West Side, I'm not sure. And those monies, we had spent those monies for those particular projects, but they're gonna be reimbursed by the government, by probably the feds. And Billy, you may wanna add to that as well.
Yeah, I mean, can we get a little more meat on that bone?
I think it's FEMA.
Or some is FEMA, one-point-seven, a lot of it's FEMA money that you hadn't received.
It's the FEMA monies that had not yet been received.
FEMA is the other governmental agency that has not reimbursed us?
That's correct. Or as of June had not reimbursed you. Yes, sir?
All right, thank you.
Any additional questions?
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you all for allowing us to work with you again this year. It's always a pleasure, and as usual, if there's any questions that develop subsequent to this meeting, please feel free to contact us, and we're certainly trying to answer.
Workshops adjourn until the meeting at five-thirty.